Ready? Everyone, we are on the record. This is a caucus of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Monday. It's already the 25th day of April. We had a 5:30 scheduled start. It's 5:43. Scanning the room, we have all council members present and accounted for, excepting councilperson Council President, you want to take it away?
Sure.
First speaker will be a deputy mayor.
Yes, actually, Maury Fosbrook can speak as to this item. I'm just going to...
Okay. I'm not sure. 16.263.
Resolution 16 to 16.
It's the installment of certificates of tax sale, including subsequent municipal liens.
Actually, basically what these are is a bait of pro... It's Bramhall or Bremere Noel.
Hold on one second. 10 I.
10 I. These are four municipal held liens for back pilot charges on properties on Bramhall. Basically, what happened was it was taken back over by Catholic Charities. So Catholic Charities is trying to pay us back, basically assigning them certificates at a discount. What we're doing is abating the interest. The city council, this council, back in December of 2013, had passed a resolution before they went into lien to put them on an installment payment without interest for five years. When Catholic Charities took it over, what happened was they didn't know about that agreement. They missed it. The properties wound up going into lien, so now they're trying to take care of what their business is. And so this is one way of getting around them having to pay the interest. Or us foreclosing and taking the properties.
Questions for Maury?
No.
Maury, thank you.
Okay.
We have a presentation and Laura Scolar from the Jersey City Parks Coalition.
Is it related to a resolution, Laura?
It is not.
Okay.
Good evening. Laura Scolar, Jersey City Parks Coalition. I'm here tonight because I wanted to bring the council up to speed on an initiative that the Jersey City Parks Coalition had announced back in October that had to do with our project, the Bigger Dig 2020. Basically, what we did is back in 2013, the Parks Coalition developed a partnership with the City of Jersey City by creating a memorandum of understanding to work towards long-term solutions so that the public can enjoy our green spaces for generations. Last fall, for National Make a Difference Day, we announced the Bigger Dig 2020, an initiative to plant at least 2,020 trees by the end of 2020. This is a continuation of our incredibly successful, award-winning Big Dig program where we planted 238,000 tulip and daffodil bulbs across the city with the help of thousands of Jersey City residents over four years. So we took this similar concept, and because the city just completed, the Environmental Commission just completed, a tree canopy study and found that there was such a severe deficit in that canopy, we decided to do a tree initiative. And as we began to collaborate with other groups in the city, Jersey City Street Trees surfaced as a natural partner. Today, we are proud to announce that the two initiatives have merged to form the City of Trees. And with the support and the encouragement of Mayor Fulop, we are excited to increase that number to 5,000 trees over the next five years. There's a number of initiatives that we have as part of this to accomplish that goal. Some of our activities that we have planned for coming up, part of this whole concept involves, what we did with the Big Dig was to engage corporate sponsors and also engage residents. So by doing that for this particular program, we're creating what we're calling the Jersey City Tree Lovers Crew, or JCTLC. These people are like you and I, residents on the ground that will help to protect and preserve our trees for years to come by watering, mulching, removing trash, and pruning trees. The first event that we have to get this rolling is on May 7th, we're holding a, the New Jersey Tree Foundation, we're actually hosting it with Sustainable JC, and there are 75 spots, of only four spots are left, so if anybody wants to be part of the Tree Lovers Crew and get a training from the New Jersey Tree Foundation, you could join us on May 7th. We also are partnering with the Embankment Preservation Coalition to bring a talk called From Paris to Jersey City, meeting the challenges of climate change. And the speaker for that is D. James Baker, former head of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, and currently with the Clinton Foundation Global Climate Initiative. This is free to all of Jersey City residents and anybody that wants to attend, and it is free thanks to our partners at NJCU and Goldman Sachs. That's going to be coming up on May 14th. Also, if you see around the room, the lovely artwork, that artwork is only a small sampling of the 90-plus pieces of artwork that our Jersey City Public School students completed, and they will be transforming Central Avenue into their own City of Trees with our storefront project that will take place on May 26th. So these are some of the initiatives that we are holding, but I guess more importantly, you're probably saying, well, what is it that you want from us and why are you sitting here in front of the council? There are actually, aside from needing money to accomplish what we're doing, there are eight ways that an investment can be made in this project, okay? And I'll outline those eight points, and council president Rolando Lavaro has convened a meeting on May 2nd that will probably be exploring some of these, but I'll let you know just simply what they are. Passing a tree ordinance requiring developers and homeowners to contribute to a citywide tree fund. Creating a line item in the budget for a tree replacement and care program, that would be in the capital budget. Investing in water trucks and stormwater retention to use gray water to water trees. Training city forestry teams to work with the Jersey City Parks Coalition and residents. Put an open space trust tax, similar to what Hudson County does, a penny tax on the ballot to help fund trees and our open spaces in Jersey City. Help Jersey City Parks Coalition write grants to foundations and other corporate sponsors to match city funding dollar-for-dollar. This is something that we've already successfully done with the city and would like to continue to do in regards to this particular program. Also, work with PSENG to fund the care of our trees. Also, establish a tree commission, because although we have an environmental commission, we have not really been able to create a tree commission that has any kind of teeth or, you know, impact or power behind them. So these are just a few of the things that we can do as city government and our nonprofit, and hopefully by working together in this regard, we will green the City of Jersey City for the health and well-being of our, not only of our residents, but of our neighborhoods, because there are proven benefits across the board that happens in our commercial districts, our neighborhoods that all have to do with the benefits of trees. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
You like much as Laura? Laura, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And let's see, we've got Bob Magro next.
Who are you here for, Bob?
10T. Good evening, all.
Good evening.
The resolution that I'm here to discuss is for a contract with Sun Guard Public Sector. Sun Guard is the company that provides us with the city's personal payroll software system. The other contract we have with them is to provide disaster recovery services. In the event that our payroll system goes down here in Jersey City, we'll be able to access their system in Florida and remotely do the city's payroll.
Questions?
Thank you all. Good night.
Carmen?
Yes, I'm here for 10W.
10W is an amendment to a contract with Mullen and Lonergan Associates. That's for the city's five-year consolidated plan, the annual action plan, and the update of the city's analysis of the impediments to a fair housing plan.
So the contract that you have before you is a contract amendment to our original plan. Back when I am boarded as director, I had solicited out services to amend, well, we had to do our consolidated plan in our caper. Our AI, which is the analysis of impediments of fair choice, was also a plan that we had to do, but in the interim, HUD gave us new guidance that we had to change it. So what you have here before you is a contract amendment so that we were able to put dollars to better use in my office in regards to what we're currently doing with the home subsidiary affordable housing trust fund analysis. So what we have here is a contract increase and amendment to what we currently have.
Contract to increase?
Yes, contract to amend and increase what we currently had already in place. So I think to year, about in 2014, we had already, the council had already passed a contract with, to do the caper, the consolidated plan, and the analysis of impediments of fair housing choice. And so that's what you have before you.
Questions for Carmen?
I want the phone locked. Do you want me to reach it?
No. No, we still have an issue with the phone line, but I did reach out to the constituent and gave them my phone number to be addressed.
The phone line issue, so when the people call in the morning, somehow nobody pick up the phone. When the people call afternoon, their phone line is working. So somehow there's something wrong. So please make sure that, you know, issue.
Yes, sir.
You know, because and the way they claim they should say that is a citywide issue. So please, okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Carmen? Wow, it's awfully quiet in here. I like it. Um, Bob Baker. We have, um...
What's up there, Bob?
10S is the first item. S is in Sam.
And that would be a resolution authorizing an agreement with Passaic County to permit the Jersey City Police Recruits to attend the police, the Passaic County Police Academy.
Self-explanatory?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to your next item, 10Y.
The item that I just handed you at the beginning of the meeting, council members, resolution authorizing the settlement of the Verizon dispute concerning the City of Jersey City's conversion from copper circuits to fiber optic cables. Yeah, I gave the...
I give signal.
Did we do that last? Did we do this last meeting?
It does for me. I've seen this before. We didn't do this?
Because I remember the fiber optic cables.
You saw it, you get pulled maybe?
Yes, I remember the fiber optic cables.
I mean, the bottom says approved.
All right, Bob. Back in February of 2014, Verizon had a meeting at the Public Safety Communication Center and notified us that they were going to be eliminating the copper and frame relay lines that following June. So we had a look into converting to fiber. At that time, we had Acting Director Joe Zija, who was, you know, the network specialist, and they worked up a system with Verizon called the MPLS system. And after many meetings, the project started. I was then assigned to Public Safety as the Communication Center, as the physical officer, and then, of course, moved into the director position while this program was still going on. And as I got involved in it, I quickly saw that the MPLS system was going to cost the city a million dollars. It was already reaching 800, and basically called back Verizon, told them I wanted the system stopped. It had a lot of bells and whistles we didn't need. I discovered there was an EVPL system, which had the same exact capacity of what we needed for a lot less, and after many, many months of negotiation with the top brass and them arguing and threatening us, we finally got them to agree. So as you can see, they basically gave us a credit of, what was it, 650?
Eighty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and then we're only obligated to pay for the entire year of 2015, was the 226,540.72, which is in my 2015 budget to cover that amount.
Questions?
I can say that you did a great job. You saved the taxpayer 658,000 because you made a tough deal with them, really. I'm really, I'm so glad. I hope every department director walk like you saved taxpayer dollars, really. You did a great job. I give you good. Yep. 658,000, just change your, you know, really great job.
Thank you. L is in Larry.
Okay, good evening, council. Okay, so my first item this evening is a resolution accepting a grant from the North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority. It encompasses two locations, Maron Boulevard from Montgomery Street to Sixth Street. It's the entire corridor. The improvements will be completely funded, including the initial soft costs for design. Also, the Oakland Avenue and St. Paul's intersection improvements, which would be a signalized intersection-type improvement. And again, this is simply accepting the grant funding. The grant funding may not be limited to this amount if the bids come in higher, and if the request for construction management is submitted, which it will be by my department, that's a separate request. I don't believe we've ever done that in the past, but whatever we can get from them, we will attempt to get. So that's a pretty self-explanatory one there.
Are you saying if they're going to hire the grant, we'll pick up the rest of the cost?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
Nope. Next item is 10R.
Okay, the next item?
Okay, so a portion of Senate Place had been paved as part of a planning board approval required section that needed to be paved. So basically, a section of Senate Place needed to be paved by the developer. They ended up paving a section that the city is looking at this point to cover. Basically, they did half the road, and the other half was done in place of the city. And because of the way that that was done, this required a special resolution. We will not be doing this in the future in this manner. It'll be done in a different manner. Yes.
Candace put something through that the paving had to be curb-to-curb. In other words, if they dig up the street or whatever...
That's not the issue here, though. You know, the...
This predates that as well, too.
Right. Planning board required a certain part of the street to get done. There was a little bit more of the street that wasn't done, and it was authorized to finish that part of Senate Place, so the whole street got done, not just a portion of it. So that portion that got extra was done curb-to-curb, though.
So my question is, did the city authorize through a legal agreement to do everything? Or did the contractor just do it?
The contractor just did it.
Then why are we paying for it?
No, it was work through my office some time ago, earlier last year, and this is the claim that was issued by the contractor.
So you said it was okay to do the whole street?
Not Joe.
It was prior to it. My division. Yes, and there was due diligence done to make sure that the pricing was in line with projects that were currently being done at the time.
So let me just get clarity. In other words, the division made a decision on the money's being spent to do the whole street before the resolution came before us. Is that, that's what happened, right?
Right, that's correct.
Oh, okay. That was a good answer.
Yeah, he was to say...
That was a good answer.
It's really not acceptable, but you got it.
Before their time, so what...
Yeah.
That's why I said that was a good answer. Okay.
Thank you.
R.
Paul Bellinboyer?
Hey, Paul.
Hello, I'm here tonight. 10N is in Nancy, 10O is in Oscar, and 10X is in Xylephon. And greetings on behalf of my director, Stacy Flanagan. N-O-X. Yeah. But certainly, certainly, we are hoping and recommending that these will get a yes. N is authorizes the city to receive money from the state, a grant for our preventive medicine clinic to help prevent and treat communicable diseases. O is grants which we...
Questions, Diane? Good. Moving on.
O are relatively small grants that we give to partners to run healthy eating programs. And this is something that's been ongoing for the last two and a half years and has been very successful, helping Jersey City residents get access to healthy food.
Questions? Okay.
And finally, X is a contract for veterinary services with the Animal Clinic and Hospital on West Side Avenue. When animal control receives an animal that needs medical care, we receive a great discount and convenient service from them. It's a longtime partnership, and cost-effective, we find.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much.
Moving right along. Joe DeSousa?
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Uh-oh, we're hitting a roadblock.
10J is a resolution, of course. Authorizing the closure of streets, Barrow from Columbus to Newark, Bay from Erie to Newark, Erie from Newark to Bay, and Newark from Erie to Jersey, beginning 7:30 a.m. and ending 8:30 p.m., Saturday, August 27, at the request of the Hudson Pride Connection Center for the purposes of LGBT pride.
Great.
Okay? No questions?
Next one's 10K. New sites for bus shelters, contract with A.R. James &amp; Company Limited and the county of Hudson.
Questions?
This is going to have advertising on it, Joe?
Yes. Joyce, then, Michael.
Where are the bus shelters to be located?
Where are they located?
On the boulevard here at?
One's at St. Paul's and the other one's at Duncan.
And the Boulevard.
And the Boulevard. Correct. And the third one at West Side and Fairmark.
Yes, only two. I think we asked one more place in the Palisade Avenue. What happened?
And that's not with this company. I believe it's another, it's another program that's been put in place. Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the ordinance 4C, that's the second reading.
10J, 10T.
I think Mr. Kune answered the other ones, yeah.
So then, if you have questions about 4C...
Any questions about 4C? He's here to answer that as well.
Second reading.
I know what this is, because this is turning over the streets that are, that will need to be private streets and a public street. My only one question is, why did we submit the title of the ordinance to be this long?
Well, because it does all of them.
Three, maybe four separate ordinances. With four separate public hearings and...
And this way, advertise my title.
That to the street, yeah, right.
Why don't we have made the ordinance?
Which? Going again?
That's what we should have named it. It would've been simpler. I just have a question. Why couldn't we just name the ordinance from private to whatever? And then put all of this in the ordinance? Do you know what kind of, what eyes are going to open when they look at all of this stuff here, and then they're not going to understand it, and then there's going to be a thousand questions about it? But if your title is easy to understand, then you can put all of this stuff inside of the ordinance. And to me, can you do that?
If you put it up into five ordinances, councilwoman, and we would have had five separate introductions...
No, how do you want to put it up five ordinances? You mean this can't go into one ordinance with that title?
This is, believe it or not, it's succinct. It does, this does a million things. It does a million things. This ordinance does amends one-way streets, amends stop intersections, parking, standing, and stopping, creates a new zone, street cleaning. I mean, it runs the gamut.
Okay, that's a preview of what's coming up. Before you go, Joe, 3E, can you speak to that as well? Folks, I just asked him if he could speak to 3E.
3E?
E, E is an elephant. Is he accepting certain roadways? So because of what we have on 4C, in terms of accepting roadways, we accepted the roadway over at Gull's Cove and didn't put in the street and the traffic and pedestrian and all the other regulations. This came up in the agenda meeting as to, are we sure we've got this all in place before we accept another street and then find ourselves catching up with street signs and all the other stuff? And we have disgruntled residents who are...
The second reading ordinance, this should be included in there, no?
We should have additional ordinance accompanying it.
They're always going to have to proceed, right? Like, you always have to take over the streets before you can regulate them. I just, maybe next time, we couple them tightly.
This is nowhere near as complicated and involved as the other. This is just by the hundred steps. This is right by the hundred steps.
Yep.
Okay.
Listen, we got to wait for 13 years to do that. Wait, okay. No, you can go on. You work so hard.
Reading that ordinance would work so hard.
I wouldn't be in charge of naming ordinances.
We have 3C or the 3A. 3A is your first one?
No, no, 3B.
No, that's the last.
That's the last.
Okay. Oh, you're together, I see. So which one is yours?
All the other ones.
3C is the first one.
3C is the R3.
See, that's amending the R3 multifamily mid-rise townhouse use, and we have D, amending the Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan to amend the regulating standards relating to Block 10 of the redevelopment plan. Are you here for that as well?
Yes, and 10M. Is he here? Yeah.
Okay.
So...
C and D, and then we're going to 10M.
To make this very quick and easy, the R3 zone does not allow for one and two family uses, because the way that they define townhouses is with no less than three dwelling units. And now the R3 is also within the historic district, so basically, a single-family homeowner has come to us and asked for to go from a one to a two, and she was going to have to go before the zoning board. So we're loosening up because a less intense use should be permitted in a more intense zone, but also because in our standard definition... zone, but also because in our standard definitions, townhouses are defined as one to four units. So to have this as a separate thing doesn't make any sense and puts an unfair burden on the single-family homeowner.
Okay, any questions on 3C? Hearing none. 3D?
That's an ordinance amending Liberty Harbor North redevelopment plan to amend the regulating standards relating to Block 10.
Questions?
Can you explain?
Sure. So Block 10 is one of the original blocks for the redevelopment plan, and the plan at the time was to build something looking more like Gull's Cove, a big block, and it was for office at the time. The times have changed, and now we're looking to do more residential. So it will, the, this amendment changes that from office to residential, from that one big block building to two point towers. We've met with Van Vorst?
No.
Paul's Hook. And Gull's Cove, and they both are in favor of this. In fact, the point towers actually give them better access to a view shed rather than the, just the block building was. There are a couple of additions, that there'll be opening some pedestrian plazas, but I think the, probably the best benefit is that it'll be connecting the waterfront walkway finally.
Questions for Tom and on 3D? Hearing none. 10M?
That's a resolution authorizing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation of conditions of the area known as the Brunswick Triangle Study Area to see if it meets the criteria to be declared an area in need of redevelopment and/or rehabilitation.
I, can we add a clause to say, this is the place where we...
Let me ask this. Is the place where we specify in the language not, no condemnation?
This is, this is authorizing the study, right?
Yeah, I know.
Before, when we've authorized the study, we've said da-da-da-da-da, and then in parentheses, but not the condemnation part. We've talked about that before.
That'll come out of the study? The, the...
It comes back for the council.
Yeah, it's back to the council. The study, the, once the study is done, the recommendation is the study to either meet qualifications of in need of redevelopment with condemnation or in need of redevelopment without condemnation.
Okay.
Or an amendment put out.
Regardless, if you know the area, most of it is single-story industrial parking lots, so it is pretty blighted, and we wanna get ahead of the curve on development. And the best way to do that is through a comprehensive plan for the area. And we also included Enos Jones Park, if you're looking at this and you're just feeling a little antsy about that. But that's because if there's any kind of bonus or open space density, we want it to go directly into Enos Jones.
You want other questions? Captain Tania from the Blue.
Will is here on 3A. And council members are gonna hand out a repaired version. The title is going to change. It's to codify Phase II properties list. The word historic should not be there, so this is an ordinance adopting amendments to the city code, Chapter 105, Building Demolition to Codify Phase II Property List.
So what's yours, Will?
This is a list that was, came out of a study undertaken in 1986 by an architectural preservation consultants firm. The city has only recently, this year, actually codified this list. And so we're adding a flag now before demolitions take place in the office of the construction code official, so that any sites that are on this list will be reviewed before they're demolished.
I don't understand why there are two different titles. This one says demolition to codify historic.
Yeah, you just explained, the first one is incorrect. The long one that you just received is the correct version. They're substituting the word Phase II for historic. They have an errant, errant word in the title.
Questions for Willow? You are off the hot seat. So, why don't we deal with, should we, is, is Rich coming in?
No.
No? Okay. So then we'll go straight to 3M. And may I ask the Law Department and representatives of 32BJ?
We ask an ordinance amending Chapter 254, property maintenance, implementing Chapter 22, Article 22, excuse me, building service employees to establish a minimum number of hours in a work week for building service employees.
Okay.
Council members, you got a revised version prior to the...
Can James tell them, do you know what the revision is, or someone else?
There were two revisions. The penalties section.
Did we just have an old version?
Yeah, yeah, there were two revisions. To the penalties section. Yeah, no, no, it wasn't. Okay. Do you want me to say what they were, or?
Let me, let me explain.
Okay. Go ahead.
So council members, I've been working with the Law Department and SEIU 32BJ. 3M is a, is the minimum, this is the Better Jobs Act, Better Jobs Ordinance. I've spoken to most of you, I think, about this, and the, in its simplest terms, it's, it basically says for commercial properties of 100,000 square feet or more, it establishes a minimum of 30, that the employer has to hire for building service workers, a minimum of 30 hours a week provided to those, those building service workers. The definition of building service workers is defined in there, and it also applies to properties, residential properties of 50 or more units. Council President called me.
Are you saying that if I own a business, that I have to hire a person for 30 hours a week even if I only need 20? In other words, what I'm asking you is if I only need part-time, a part-time employee there for 20 hours a week, is this ordinance mandating that I must hire a person for 30 hours a week?
That's exactly it. Let me, let me, let me finish explaining here, and then the other folks will also add to it. Just to answer your question, there's a lot of research that's gone into it. For 100,000 square feet or more, it's not getting done in 20 hours a week. It's a, takes about 5,000 square feet for a person to clean for, for one hour, to efficiently complete 5,000 square feet. So it's gonna take more than, more than 20 hours a week to clean. Correct. So I wanna introduce our partners here, 32BJ, and I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin Brown, and then he'll say a few words and, and speak a little bit on it. And then we have some legal experts as well who'll talk to the, the, the legal basis for, for this as, as well. And then we also have the Law Department, which worked very closely in, in drafting this legislation. And so it's you, and then Amy?
Yeah.
And anyone else?
Brent.
And Brent? Okay.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you tonight. I am Mr. Brown, Kevin Brown, Vice President, 32BJ, the Service Employees International Union. As many of you know, we represent thousands of building service workers, many of whom live here in Jersey City and work here in Jersey City, cleaning buildings, security officers at buildings, as well as residential workers at buildings. So we're trying to do a paradigm shift here in two ways. And with the advent of an increasing number of per diem jobs, part-time jobs, temporary jobs, we're trying, in one specific industry, property services, for janitors and security officers, to change it so that those workers, where there's the need for multiple numbers of workers in the buildings in Jersey City, in the, in the private buildings, to service those properties so that those workers would get at least 30 hours of work. They would have thus more time to devote to their families, more time to help coach soccer, more time to, to really help build the community. And they have part-time to a lot of these jobs historically, and we're trying to change that. So that's M, and N is a...
Just do one at a time.
Do one at a time. All right. So that is M. We have Amy Sugimori, who's gonna speak more to the specifics of the legislation, but we wanted you to have an understanding of what it is that we're trying to do here.
Let Amy speak, and then I'll be the first one. Okay.
My name, my last name is Sugimori, S-U-G-I-M-O-R-I. My first name is Amy, and I am the Director of Policy and Legislation for SEIU 32BJ. I do wanna note, we're present in 11 states in Washington, DC, and while this is a new form of legislation, it's one that's currently in the works in, in a few other jurisdictions as well. Very similar legislation has been introduced in Washington, DC, Montgomery County, Maryland, the State of Connecticut, and the State of Delaware. And this is really part of a movement that we've been hearing around, about a lot around the country, which is that in the post-recession recovery, the Federal Reserve Bank of Atlanta and San Francisco and others have noted that there has been a market increase in involuntary part-time jobs, meaning as we have recovered jobs following the recession, there have been more and more of the jobs created as part-time jobs. In some cases, as was pointed out, there's legitimately a need for part-time work. You're a boss, you only need somebody to help out part-time, and that makes sense. But in other sectors, such as building services in large buildings, where we see many markets in which this work, you know, as the council president pointed out, productivity demands at least a full-time person in a building over a certain size. There are examples of, of markets like Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, New York City, San Francisco, Chicago, in which the cleaning work or the security work in these buildings is overwhelmingly full-time because there is a need for the full-time work. Now, an unfortunate reality that we experience is that there, you know, there are cost benefits to breaking full-time work into part-time jobs. And one savings is that the employer doesn't have the responsibility to provide health insurance for part-time employees, for people who are making under 30 hours a week. Now, the reality is, this is low-wage work. So very often, low-wage workers who are, say, doing cleaning in offices are supplementing this income by working multiple part-time jobs, you know, maybe delivering pizzas or babysitting or doing other work to pull together enough income to support their families. So you have somebody who is working more than full-time but has no employer who's responsible for paying for health insurance. So who's paying for health insurance for them and their families? Very possibly the taxpayers if they're not doing without. And that's the matter of concern. You know, there's a question of, we live in a society in which there is an expectation that people will have access to health care, and the concern is when the cost of that gets pushed to the taxpayers as opposed to appropriately where there is a need for full-time work, it becoming part of the employer's responsibility. And in, you know, in light of this reality, in light of the growth of involuntary part-time, and sort of the growing awareness that a lot of the jobs in our new economy are very low-wage jobs, there has been increased attention by policymakers and by advocates to say, let's look at the schedules of work as well. That while it's understood that there are times when realistically an employer has the need for part-time assistance, there are times when it is possible to manipulate the demand for labor because people who are poor need jobs and will work on many terms, to, to limit it down to the smallest increments to avoid responsibilities and have people available on demand. That means you don't have time to spend with your kids. It means you don't have time to spend with your families, and you're just running from part-time job to part-time job. So the, the goal of this legislation is to say, okay, this is a big problem. This is a problem that affects many people, but let's make it manageable. Let's take a look at a sector and industry, in an industry in which we know that there is a need for this much work just based on the productivity demands and the nature of the work, where there is part timing that is not at the request of the workers, but part timing because that is the, that is an economically expedient weighted staff the work. And it can be very clear and very simple to establish a minimum standard, just as, you know, over 100 years ago, it became a, or not 100 years ago, it became a matter of saying, hey, we need a minimum wage. You know, there needs to be a floor. This provides a floor for hours to say, okay, you can set schedules and sort of figure out what, what works for clients, but there has to be a minimum. And so the minimum that this establishes is, is 30 hours, but specifically tailored only to covered locations. So covered locations means large buildings. This is an office complex, a college, college or university or museum of more than 100,000 square feet. So big enough that there is absolutely the need for more than one full-time person, for sure, as well as residential buildings or complexes with more than 50 units. So only in very large buildings of certain type in which the staffing is one that is known, and there's many models to look at in terms of the ability of landlords to meet these types of requirements and still be able to attract tenants and, and do fine. And this applies only to, you know, building services workers. So these are cleaners, security officers, porters, concierges, you know, people who perform these defined sets. So not all, not all the work in the building, just the building services work. And also with a recognition that this doesn't cover if there's a need to have somebody come fill in for somebody because they're out on sick leave or they're out on vacation. That person filling in doesn't have to be employed for 30 hours, they just need to be employed, employed for the need. And if there is a security officer doing security shifts over the weekend, which is, you know, a way that in buildings are staffed often, is that you have a full-time crew doing the week, the weekday security and a part-time crew doing the weekend security, that the weekend security officers also don't have to be employed at 30 hours. But that's it. It's a simple, bright line. It's a baseline standard. It sets a minimum. It sets a floor. It's for a pretty specific universe of workers in a pretty specific universe of locations. It builds off of the actual experience of many other markets in which this is the norm, and it is part of an increased sort of growing consciousness throughout the region of looking at hours of work so that we can make sure that workers aren't just seen as commodities on tap for the smallest increment you can get at the cheapest price.
Counselor, is there a comment?
I don't think this is out of the city's league. I mean, the city, you're saying that the city, you want the city to mandate that businesses within the city hire people for these amount of hours even if they, where, how do you do that? I mean, how do you put all of that pressure on the businesses and say that they must do this? And how is that gonna be monitored or, you know?
I'm happy to respond. I'm sure 32BJ would as well, which is that, as Kevin said at the outset, it does require kind of a paradigm shift here, right? So a paradigm shift, a way of thinking about this whole thing, about employment and work and jobs and, and how we value people in that sense. And so I think it's a, it's in an economy where disparities are growing wider and wider, and we see, as they talked about, the idea of that people are being moved to part-time jobs and, and, and just to avoid paying, paying health benefits, providing coverage in that way, that this kind of provides people better, better jobs as, as the ordinance says, right? An opportunity for, for meaningful work that can allow you to have a, a living wage and being able to take care of your families, and then be able to live in the community and be a, be a productive part of the community. And it's not, let me just say, it's, it's, it's not unprecedented, it's not unprecedented in the sense that we pay social security. We, we did earn sick days. We've done, we've taken measures that protect workers and that we go out on the limit and say, these are the things that we think we value in, in society, and we wanna make sure that we, that we want to make that available to all people, including low-income workers who often, oftentimes are the most vulnerable in these situations. And I'll let 32BJ kind of share their response.
Sure. I mean, I think, I think it's true to say that similarly, when the concept of the minimum wage was first established, or the concept of overtime and looking at too many hours were established, these were seen as surprising and different approaches for the, the city or a state to take action on. And there, you know, there was a lot of discussion at that time about, well, this is something that should really be negotiated between the employee and the employer. And then, and then the recognition...
Did you guys discuss these? Have you sat around and met with the employers in Jersey City that have these types of buildings and they're willing to go along with this?
So this, I mean, this is something that certainly also...
I've called, I'll just say, I've called multiple employers who fall within the 100,000-plus category and written letters to everyone, at least that I have, that was given to me from the city about, on the list of employer, properties that meet... from the city about, on the list of employer properties that meet that criteria. And, and, look, the response generally was that, you know, certainly, of course, they don't want to, they're going to end up paying benefits, a little bit more money for them, right, in their pocket and whatnot. But I don't, but nobody was screaming at me that this is patently unfair or anything like that. In fact, in one case, one employer said to me, you know what? This could be good, because I've got an employer, instead of having part-time workers who are just bouncing from job to job, because they're trying to put together different jobs, and they have no loyalty to my company, now they're a part of the organization, and now they can feel like they're part of this, and while it may cost me a little bit more, I'd probably get a little bit more out of that employee as well.
That's what they wanted to do.
I agree.
You mean, we have to step in and tell them?
You know?
The values of...
To me, that's out of our league, to me. I think we're overstepping our bounds. Minimum wage was one thing, because that was all over the state, and everyone was for that. But now you're doing minimum wage, sick leave, and now you're going to tell the guy, even he only needs a 20-hour a week, and he's got to bring him on 30? I don't know. I think we're stepping, you know, in a minute, we're going to be in the business of mandating employment opportunities for people. I don't know. I have to think about that, that's all. I'm just, I'm being, what do you call it, devil's advocate, trying to say how I would feel if you came to me as a city and put in an ordinance telling me what I need.
We have responded in Michael.
Sure. So I mean, I do also want to be very, very clear, that this is carefully designed to not create additional hours of work. This is connecting the need for labor, the need of a certain number of labor, and matching that up with full-time jobs, as opposed to multiple part-time jobs. So the intention is absolutely not to require somebody to hire somebody for more hours than they need, absolutely not. The intent is to prevent the breaking down of full-time jobs into multiple part-time. And the other thing that I think is important to point out is, often with minimum standards, the point is to level the playing field. There are employers who would like to do the right thing. They would like to hire people at full-time and provide health insurance, and find themselves having to compete with others who are going to break it into part-time. Pardon me?
Who monitors this? In other words, is this another job for the city, or does the union...
This would be complaint-driven. This would be, employees would have to identify that there's a violation and come forward. And if employees are not coming forward and making complaints, then, you know, that's really all there is. It's up to employees to file complaints and say, this is a, I have a violation, I can go to court, and I can have, I can seek my remedy there.
It's written in there. James, maybe you could speak to that a little bit, as to...
I would just say, I would like to have ordinance on books that nobody's monitoring, because that means John Doe, who has a 1,000-foot unit, is doing the right thing, and Jim James over here is not doing the right thing and getting away with that. I think it needs to be some way to, if you're going to put it on the books, that it needs to be mandatory for all like-sized agencies to be, to have to comply, so that every one of them has the same, I guess, obligation to do that.
Then Joyce.
Yes, go ahead. Yes, how many building will be more than 100,000 square feet in Jersey City? And there are how many residential is more than 50? And if we change, I mean, the city putting this in ordinance, what kind of cost, you know, the Council President said that maybe a little bit more money, then I'd like to know how much will be a little bit more money? You know, so can you give me some data, what you have?
Sure. So there'll be more money with regard to healthcare, but, and 32BJ and others also know this, is that instead of two part-time, two people working part-time jobs, you're going to have one person working 30 hours per week or more, up to 40 hours. So...
If the owner just works part-time, will this affect them? Suppose you have a employee that is...
Want to work part-time?
Yes.
How will this affect them? They just want to work part-time, they don't want the 30 hours.
Then they'll lose the job.
So...
You're thinking back on the question I have, which is the unintended consequences of something like this, because it's so narrowly sliced to one specific thing, and if it's, if this is a problem across the board, and you cut off one piece, you could do something... That's one example of an unintended consequence of something like that. You could have somebody who's got a part-time job somewhere else and this, and maybe they prefer the other, they're doing this to kind of supplement, and now they've lost that source of income. I just worry about the unintended consequences.
I worry about overall that not being watched.
See, we always watch that, when they increase the minimum wage, we always say that, then as a business person, maybe they're going to reduce their manpower at their place. So they'll lose the job, some peoples, you know? There are always things happen, but now, before we study this one, would you tell me that how many building is more than 100,000 square feet? How many building is more than 50,000 units? And 50 units? And if they're all in place that's low, what kind of cost will be, going to be, you know, those peoples? You know, give me some numbers, you know?
Sure.
We don't want to just pass the ordinance or something, we don't know any financial impact for, you know, people of Jersey City. Okay? So give me some numbers. Right, wait, I'm ready to write it.
That's great. So we can, we're happy to provide you a list of the buildings, which we have. The reality, Councilman, is that we've been able to bargain for over 400, buildings over 400,000 square feet, that there's already requirement that they have healthcare. We have not been successful in being able to reduce that down to 100,000 square feet. So there are approximately about 12 to 15 buildings that would fall under this, in Jersey City, commercial office buildings, where there are part-time workers working in those buildings. We estimate somewhere around 115 part-time workers in those buildings, who would have their hours increase when this passes to at least 30 hours. In the residential sector, the reality is, is that virtually all those buildings are already full-time for the porters and concierges, and so there really won't be much of an impact, if any, for those employees.
So we're targeting 12 to 15 buildings, more or less, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
We're targeting 12 to 15 buildings, to make them employ their people for 30 hours. That's what you, that's what you just said, right?
Targeting? I mean, we're addressing 12, those are, there are 12 to 15 buildings.
Other residential properties are already kind of doing what's there.
Councilwoman, my own experience to this, which I think is incredibly important, we have, when we converted, because when we began in 2001 to organize the janitors in Jersey City, they were, 90% of them were part-time. Today, about 25%, 20% are part-time, because we've been able to full-time them through the collective bargaining process. When we go into the buildings and we have the transition, obviously, the people who have higher seniority are thrilled, because it fundamentally changes their lives. And that's what this is about. There's no reason why people should have to work 12 hours a day and weekends. And that, and when we say that, we're destroying the community. We really are. There's no reason for people to work eight hours a day, then have to work four hours at night, or five hours at night, and then take a weekend job. That destroys the fundamental way that a community can function. We're not spending time with our children, we're not coaching soccer, we're not helping our kids with the homework, we're not participating in the civic life of the community, which is so fundamental to creating a good, strong community. And that's what this is really about. And yes, there will be a few people who will be laid off, some of those who are in the union will have bumping rights to other buildings. But really, in the long run, my experience is, that people are so happy to have a decent job, to have a life that they can create, they can go to work for eight hours at night, most of these jobs are at night, and build a better life.
That would be 10 hours times $15 an hour, times 125 employees, that he said, and medical benefits for 125 employees, that would be the cost.
No.
There's no additional wages. There's no additional wages.
No increase in wages as a result, it's the health insurance.
So I'm saying, it's going to be 10 extra hours.
No, there's no extra hours. So here...
At 20 hours...
No, because you take the total amount of hours, and you just change the...
You have less employees than four hours. It's very simple.
Simple mess, yes. Instead of 100 people to work, you're going to be about 80 people to work, and the 80 people will be more work than 100 people. Simple.
It's the health benefits and the cost of the employer.
There's a cost to the employer. I'm not particularly, it's not my primary concern, but I am worried about the...
People are going to lose their jobs.
Their jobs, because it's so narrowly sliced.
So in other words, you help to some people, but we're going to help to some other people too.
I think we're actually helping all people, because in the end, when we continue the same old paradigm, you know, Yogi Berra had a saying, he said, "If you keep on going on the road you're going on, eventually you're going to get where you're going to." And if we keep on saying, yes, we accept it that people should have to work at one full-time job, and another part-time job, and a job on the weekends, we're going to destroy our communities. That's what this is attempting to change, Councilman, and I...
You know, we are the good people, you know? As we do, you know, they have a cost now for us, if somebody will pay, this is the problem the government today is, you know? So now, I'm not going to pay, but other people's going to pay? Okay, go ahead. It's not right. You know, this is the problem. So now, let me put it this way, you know, every time I see this one, you know, we're going to have to give some rooms to business people to create the job. And this city, not only protect employee, but also this city, and our role is that we're going to create better environment to create the job for the business community. That's our role too. We don't want you too much rules and regulation to tie them up, actually, it's going to end up, they're going to be hurt, the people, employee side. So now, when they keep going like this, I scratch my head. Someday, by census, you know, our population, national population is going to reduce, so maybe government come to us, some special organization come to us, listen, if you marry under age 30 years old, you have to sex with your wife maybe five times a day, or two times a day, you guys are going to regulate the night life too, the way that you regulated the business community. I think I was uncomfortable, really.
With all due respect, and I appreciate your opinion, but with all due respect, I think many of those same things were said when we decided...
Folks.
I'd love to be able to address your concerns.
But we have to understand to look at...
And we're all for, listen, Councilman, we are very pro-development as well, that's where our industry lies. We live in the real estate industry. We believe deeply that the city can be successful, and ensure, economically successful, and real estate industry can thrive, and at the same time, ensuring that the jobs created are good jobs. And that's what this is about.
All the other advantages, except, except for Jersey City, you know? Actually, I'm feeling uncomfortable too. You know, any, any, any organization, any institute located in Jersey City, if you have to do, that one is just Jersey City, it's the government side, you know? There were so many, you know, agency, tunnels, agency, they're here, you know? So by the long story, make sure, thank you for your presentation, I appreciate it for that part.
So, in order to make this kind of progress, if you want to rely on the free market and the generosity of employers to create better jobs, and to provide a minimum wage, and increase minimum wages, to provide healthcare, to provide social security, disability, family medical leave, whatever the case might be, if we believe that these are things that people can, that we can provide to our fellow man here in Jersey City, as well as throughout the country, and we think that, if we think we're going to rely on the free market and business to take the lead in that, then I would say, you know, none of that stuff has ever happened, except through, through some sort of progressive activism to like, move these sort of things forward. So this is exactly that thing, and it's a model, and, and look, it's unprecedented in some, some respects, and, and so, you're asking, asking it to decide on the side of workers on this, and decide to be on the side of working people on this, this side, because on the other side is, you know, they're not bad people, employers, but their bottom line is, their bottom line, at the end of the day. And, and so, putting this forward, because my bottom line is the people of Jersey City, and making sure that they have better jobs, better opportunities. What's that?
Also, look at the weight or the demand on both, their people of Jersey City also, you know? I think my biggest issue is that some will be able to get away with it and some won't. I have a problem with that. I have a problem with this 100-square-foot building going through all of the rigmarole of bringing their people up to the 30 hours, and this one over here doesn't, and everybody is still working. There needs to be some mechanism to monitor, to ensure that all of them are going to do the same thing. Do you know what I'm saying? That's the only thing I see missing from this. And also, I see missing from this, what's the city going to do to help the businesses? Is there some kind of tax credit, like when you run welfare, you get a tax credit if you do, if you hire a person on welfare? Do we have some, some kind of, I guess, some kind of bonus, or some kind of something that we're going to offer to give to the employees that do this, since they're incurring an extra cost? Is the city going to say, if you take this person to full-time, here's your tax credit or your tax benefit, or whatever? That way, we're doing what's right for all of Jersey City, not just the employer, not just the employee, but the employer also. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm looking for, a balance.
I appreciate that. You can say that they've been getting that for the past decades, because who pays for that healthcare today? People rely on Medicaid, people rely on the New Jersey Family Care, and they've been getting that subsidy for a long time. And really, we've been paying for their, out of our tax dollars, for that healthcare. And I really, and I really think that that's something that this addresses, that we really need to change.
Can protect those who desire to work part-time? I mean...
Well, this is only one very small industry, you know, segment of the industry. There's, you know, plenty of jobs in retail, there's plenty of jobs...
Plenty of jobs, but because I deal with people on a daily basis, and they're all looking for jobs, and for, for me to see others lose a job, a part-time job, which they made a choice, this works for them. They'll be in my office the next week saying...
Yes. No, I appreciate that, Councilwoman. If we took a survey of the workers, they would, you know, unanimously say, create good jobs. This is what, you know, the members that you heard from today feel very strongly, that this is what we need. And so, you know, I think that that's what's the interest of Jersey City, and there's plenty of other jobs that, you know, thousands of other jobs, in the retail industry, and in...
Okay, let's say, let's say this passed, and now, let's say, 80 people, let's say 30, let's say 50 people get laid off because of this, then you guys can help find them another part-time job?
Well, some of them will have bumping rights under the Union Collective Bargain Agreement. Others, we will work with...
Look, I know with a union sometime, if you've been a union, if you get laid off, then they can find you another audition.
The simple answer to your question is, we will be able to help some, and eventually all of them will find jobs in the industry, either on their own or with our assistance. Because that's been our reality, our experience in the past, when we full-time so many of the other buildings, like all the Matt Kelly buildings along the waterfront, Harbor Side One, Harbor Side Two, Harbor Side Three, Harbor Side Five, Harbor Side Ten, the little frac buildings, 499, 540, all those buildings, when they were full-time, that was our experience, and we helped those workers to make sure that they had a soft landing.
You're going to see the list of the buildings that this affect, right?
Yes.
Okay, EA, let me ask you a question. How much extra cost will be to City of Jersey City if we do this one?
Right now, it's zero.
I'm asking Bob.
The only clause I would see, if someone reported it to, I think it's the Housing Department, the City would have to take action, but right now, there's no clause.
No, that's not, that's not, no, there's no...
The law does not require the City to do anything.
James can speak to that, it's a...
Jersey City. So in other words, no cost to a taxpayer.
Address it through a right of action.
The President is a private clause of action provision in both ordinances.
I can't give.
There's a, I'll talk later, there's a, there's a provision in both ordinances that allows an aggrieved employee to bring a claim against the successive contractor for violation of any of the provisions under the ordinance. You mentioned before about compliance, there's also a penalty clause in there under Section 1-25, which sets out the fines, as provisions with respect to notice and posting of the rights under the ordinance at the site, so that they'd be informed as to whether or not they can establish a clause of action to alert the appropriate people to, that they have a complaint. So, if that helps, yeah.
This gets, you said there's a clause in there about penalties and fines... This gets, you said there's a clause in there about penalties and fines. However, in our conversations up to this point, you said no one is monitoring. So how can there be a penalty and a fine if no one is monitoring? That takes me right back to my very first question, is that one person that's being monitored by the employees is gonna get a penal, a penalty and a fine, and this other company over here, who's not doing anything, is not gonna receive anything? And who does the fine go to? And who, and who, who judges or whatever the, the, the incident? Does it go to court? Is it a ticket? You know, does Jersey City get the money? Oh, okay, so now I see.
So we have to hire a compliance officer, always sir?
That's what I've been looking for, like, come on and tell me what's going on, you know?
So who wants the clause and how do we have to find go to?
That was one of the actual changes that I alluded to at the beginning. Initially, there was a provision in there which allowed the fines to be remitted directly to the aggrieved employee, but that's, or the changes were to take that out, because that's not proper. It should be remitted to the appropriate enforcing authority.
That's what I asked you.
So that's, I mean, that's where they would go, they wouldn't be issued directly to the employee.
That's the question that I asked you right from the beginning, who is gonna monitor? And who is gonna impose these fines? And who is going to judge them, write the tickets, and who is gonna collect them? Those are the things that I asked right from the beginning. My problem with that is, there needs to be a monitoring entity if you're gonna create this kind of a.
We kinda have one.
Well, I asked. I asked that right from the beginning.
We're not the, right, but we're not the legal, the, the official legal entity, but we will be monitoring it, because that's the industry that we live in. And so, it's not about writing a ticket, the, the way. It's a, yes, the person, the individual would have what's called the right of private action. And they themselves, with, in most cases, with our assistance, would be able to take it through to municipal court or state court?
Municipal.
Municipal court.
Go to municipal court to enforce the action. So, and they come back to us to.
As the City of Jersey, they ask to hire the compliance officer to enforce this.
Right. That's what I've been asking right from the start.
And, and cost. Jersey City for enforcement. It's an individual right of enforcement. People have all kinds of individual rights right now, they can sue you for whatever reasons. That's what this is analogous to, if I'm.
So you know what we do?
With all the respect, you heard that our concern, right? We draw this one, you know what I'm saying? Go back, put your, all the questions and so's inside to more modify this, to bring back to get next time. I think this is the right way to do, you know what I'm saying? Because your answer is not enough to, you know, to answer our questions, you know? So why don't we do this way? What do you think, right?
Frank, you had a question?
Yeah, we draw some.
I don't know what my vote is, so I don't, I don't care whether.
Danny, you have a question?
I'm good.
Needs to be redrafted personally, but.
Let's, we continue to the conversations, if you wanna have amendments, I'd ask you to consider voting this through for first reading and then for introduction, and then if there are other concerns, we can continue to address that. I, I don't know that, I'll be frank with you, on the compliance issue and city comply, we've, we've talked through that quite a bit. The idea of, we've already got compliance officers dealing with tax abatements and wage theft and everything else that's under the law, and, and so, it was a very conscious, if I may, it was a very conscious decision that we didn't wanna burden the city with additional, and so the idea of a right of private action came across as the best option available at this time for, for that to happen, outside of hiring another compliance officer. So, I'm not proposing to do that. If, if you wanna do that, I'll be happy to add that on, and then we'll have to add that to the city budget, next year's budget, I guess, in that respect, so.
Are we addressing other amendments as well?
Yeah.
So any other?
Questions on this?
No.
Okay, great.
The second ordinance proposal is N, which is a worker retention ordinance, and what this would do is when a building owner changes their contractor from one contractor to another contractor, it would provide that those employees would be able to work for the new contractor for at least ninety days. Now, this is already the law in Jersey City for Jersey City's contractors, but it is not the law for, in the private sector. And we're recommending to the city to consider doing this. It's the law in New York City, it's the law in Philadelphia, it's the law in State of California, many other jurisdictions have already passed that, and it seems to be working extremely well, it's the law in Washington DC as well, and we're recommending that do the same thing here in Jersey City for the protection of workers who shouldn't see their jobs thrown into the trash can after many years, just because of the whim of a building owner to change a contractor, that many of those employees may be very good employees. So, Amy, do you wanna speak to any of the policy issues, or?
I can, I can have questions.
Yeah.
So on three N, we're talking about three N right now, displaced workers ordinance. Kevin, just give an explanation that we're here about.
Everyone, questions about that one? Concerns? I'd like to hear them now, I'd ask if you have them. Okay, I think, so I, I think, just to, just to sum it up, I think that the three N is far less controversial or, than three M, in that respect, I understand that three, three M is a paradigm shift, but a displaced worker ja, ordinance, frankly, for, for this industry would have been great, but it, I personally think it would have been great for the Pathmark workers who were over there at, on Grand Street as well, or for the other workers that, where jobs just shut down and they close them down, and then, and you're out in the street. So, I think it's basically humane.
If you say ninety days, or whatever days you say here for the new employee, the new employee hasn't gotten there yet, so they've been gone already for thirty days or sixty days, and the new employee probably won't get there for another ninety, a hundred, how is he gonna take on those employees? But that's okay, I don't wanna, I'm not gonna argue, I'm finished.
So just to be clear, that there's a, you can, after ninety days, termination can only occur after, with cause, correct? So, just to put that out there, because I may have.
Before the ninety days.
Before the ninety days, I'm sorry, before the ninety days.
Yeah. So the transition or ensures a, a smooth transition to the new contractor.
Okay. Folks, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate the, the heavy lift there. Shall we go from the top? Um, actually, we have.
Some questions about feet, ten feet.
Actually, before, before we move on, I just wanna get the, we've got these gentlemen here. No, I apologize, I meant, I forgot about these gentlemen here, who are here with, on three, Jim McCann and Matt, three L. Actually, I wanna also hand this out, this should have been disseminated with your, your packets. Three L. So what, what you're receiving, and then these gentlemen are gonna talk about their, they put in an application for an abatement, which had been on, the application was received quite some time ago, I don't recall when, can you tell me, what, when did you apply?
Last summer.
Last summer. So, as I've, I've suggested in the past meetings, we haven't seen really a long-term tax abatement come before the council, in, in a couple of months now, and several meetings. This is three L. And in large part because, all of the applications that had come before, the, there's a tax abatement committee that's been reviewing and basically saying, if they've had previous abatements, we wanna know what the compliance is before we move forward with another application. And so, so this is the first application, that's really since that, since that Office of Contract Compliance, where Pierre-Lieandre is heading up, and Office of Diversity and Inclusion with Reverend McCray, ever since they've been set up, this is the first long-term tax abatement that's really coming before the council since then. This memo basically outlines, after a review, the, the applicant here, Matt, what's the name of your company, Matt?
Hopkins Group.
Right, so hi, it's Jim McCann, I think most of you know me, I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Journal Square Urban Renewal, and the parent company is the Hopkins Group, which is Mr. Weinreich.
This memo basically indicates that for a previous project called the Kennedy Lofts, for which he received an abatement, also in the Journal Square area, that he was in full compliance, submitted all of his materials, all his reporting, rather, Manning reports, payroll reports, and actually achieved the, the hiring of locals and minorities as well. So, it's all outlined there, and I'm gonna turn it over to Jim to discuss the proposed application that's before you.
So, I, I would just like to show you a little picture. This is a redevelopment of an existing building, which is a little bit unusual for a tax abatement, many times there's reconstruction, but this is an existing building in the heart of Journal Square, that has, has been. It's one of the oldest buildings in Jersey City, and it's located essentially about a block, a half a block from, from the Journal Square path station, transportation center. It's an existing building, it's only being used right now on the ground floor. The ground floor are a couple of retail stores, and if you look at those photographs, there's some really ugly nineteen seventy giant billboard, poster boards in front of the building. So, my client, Mr. Weinreich, the Hopkins Group, is, what he is going to do, is he's going to tear down all those wallboards there, and the existing building above, from the second floor to the sixth floor, is completely vacant and unutilized right now. There hasn't been anybody that's occupied it in many years, so it's a truly blighted building. So what he's gonna come in and do, is he's simply gonna renovate the exterior of the building and the interior of the building, so that effectively, he's gonna restore the building to what it looked like fifty or sixty years ago, when it was really a beautiful building. He's gonna do all the restoration work on the front of the building, preserve these really gorgeous windows, and then rip down all this wallboard, so that basically the front of the building has a very nice retail presentation. And this kind of action is actually called for in the Journal Square two sixty, twenty sixty redevelopment plan, which is where this project is located. So he's actually doing exactly what the redevelopment plan is asking for some, for these existing buildings. He's not gonna tear it down, he's gonna renovate it. He's not expanding it in any way, other than what he is doing, he is making the main entrance of the building on the flip side of the building, on Magnolia Avenue. So this is a rendering of what Magnolia Avenue is gonna look like, which right now is just an abandoned brick part of the building that's not even being used. So he's gonna create the residential lobby in the back and activate Magnolia Avenue, which I think is a really big plus for the community, because there's not really a lot of traffic back there.
And they go leave all the commercial on the front end.
And the residential is on the back end?
Yes.
Do you have any?
That sounds.
Do you have any? Just on how the rear of the building is gonna look, is that it?
That's it, right there. It's a, it's a brick, existing block structure, so what, this, this doesn't exist right now, so this is, this whole area is gonna be refurbished to make it look like this. Right now, it really just looks like a warehouse, kinda.
That's gonna be the lobby?
Yep, it's gonna be the lobby of the building.
Uh, please. Please, can I ask?
Uh, I don't know. Well enough to know that.
The building from the front, the valley.
Oh, okay, okay.
It was across the street from the State Theater, which I'm not there either. Just, just one.
This actually. He does. We, we met with Councilman Bojiano, he likes the project very much. We've gone through the planning board, planning board liked the project very much also. There's gonna be a rooftop recreation on top of this building, on top of this part of the building for the residents, as an amenity for them. But, but I think really the, the best feature about the project is, this is what you get in place of what you see in those photographs.
How many units?
Just forty. It's not a big project, forty units.
Market rate, forty units.
Yes.
And Journal Square. What's the size of the units? One, two, three, one, two, two?
So, so there's, there's studio apartments that are about five hundred square feet, but it's primarily one bedrooms that are about six hundred and seventy-five square feet, and some two bedrooms that are about eight hundred and fifty square feet. So it's a mix, mostly one and two bedrooms, couple of studios.
Market rate.
Yes.
The original, they need to be market rate there, they're right next to transportation, shopping district, or whatever, you know, to the towers and all that stuff, so that should be market rate. And what I like is that it's not gonna interfere with the shopping area, because the residents are gonna enter from a side street, which means it's like they're not even living on Kennedy Boulevard, they're living on Magnolia, is that the name of the block?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a nice project. Rich knows twenty-five years? I don't know.
Twenty-five years.
Does he know?
He knows.
Oh, he knows? Okay.
He knows it's twenty-five.
Is he, is he not here, so he doesn't have to vote on it? Is that why he's not here? Oh, he will?
Never again, never again.
Will he be?
I'll also add that this particular, what was that, Diane?
Will Rich be here on Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll also add on this particular proposal, this abatement application, I mean, the ordinance, the, the payments are staged adjustments in there, so it goes from twelve percent to fourteen percent to sixteen percent, which is higher than what's been typically done, I think, for, for some of the other abatements. I am, I know other folks have talked about the, the idea of long-term tax abatements, and particularly the length of these abatements and so forth, particularly as we, we continue to develop and grow. In this case, I think it's warranted, the, there's historic elements that he's gonna be putting in, and the costs are fairly sizable to him, very, fairly high, it's a fairly costly adventure to, and if you look at a breakdown of his like costs, in terms of labor, as well as materials, his materials are almost fifty percent of the total cost of the project itself in, in that sense, so.
Also, also, sometimes it's harder to actually renovate a building than it is to build a new building, because there's a lot of unknown factors that the architects and the engineers had to take into consideration, to preserve the shell and then lay out the units inside the building, so that it works inside the existing structure.
Any questions for us?
Yes.
Can I ask? Okay. First things, I, I think, John, I think we have to understand, any long-term tax exemption, the abatement, we ask a city impact analysis sheet is missing, and we ask ownership and the shares, their ownership, we're supposed to get it, we don't. And the third is, we ask the project income statement is not here, but added to that, by ordinance, we talking about the twelve percent of the annual gross revenue, you know, that I understand. But if I see financial agreement, which are the most important part of that, they say ten percent of annual gross revenue, and also, when I see that the Jersey City, you know, fiscal officer actually, analysis sheet, they payment actually different than what we expect, you know? They should say twelve, fourteen, sixteen, that's the way they change, but financial statement, the financial agreement, they're not clear that part of that, so I don't know is which one, which is, you know, really, it's all confusing now.
Well, I don't know what, I don't know what you didn't receive, as far as, we, I certainly sent out the typical packet, including the service charge versus conventional, the tax assessors chart there, so I don't, it's online, so I, I don't know if it wasn't, was that, what do you miss? I'm sorry, Councilman, what are you missing?
Okay, first things, I see that the ordinance.
Okay.
All right, there is, where is, that the annual service charge, twelve percent of annual gross revenue, correct? But if you see, financial agreement to page A, section four point one.
Okay, that's a typo, and that's a typo. Oh, okay, that's a typo, and that's a typo, that's easily correctable. Page eight of the financial agreement?
Yeah, section 4.1.
Number one, city service charge at 10% annual gross revenue, which is right?
12.
Okay, 12, but you say 10% of here, okay, so you're correct.
Yes.
We have to go by it one at a time, so, now, another one. Okay. Our fiscal officer put in the statement, what are they called, the proposed abatement, page two?
Page two of the draft?
Yeah, no, it's a draft by a fiscal officer.
Oh, in this Al Cameron's?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Annual service charge payment, 12%, and the 14% to go up 16%, you know what I'm saying, 12, 14, 16. But when I see our ordinance, and the overall financial statement, they didn't say that part of it. Okay, now, where's the financial agreement to say they pay 12, 14, 16 increase, it's not there, and even our ordinance not say what, that they increase, the stage adjustment, stage one, year 1.1, first year, six years, A, B, C, D, E, actually, you know what I'm saying? So they're not clear for the annual service charge fee.
Okay, yeah. Alright, so you're, I will, I will...
Yes, stage adjustment, nothing there, you know? In the ordinance itself?
Yes.
Presented, and agreed?
So you don't want, John?
Looking at page three, did you see page three of Al Cameron's?
Financial agreement?
I see, okay, it's, it's just the ordinance, okay.
Ordinance we passing, we don't even know they're clear that what each annual service charge will be, just say 12%, okay, but financial agreement to that page, will city Bob, and they're gonna be signing, there was another different one, you know what I'm saying, so we gotta make it clear before we discuss that.
We'll fix it. Alright? Who else?
Were you missing things from the packet?
He doesn't have, he doesn't have, that's why he's asking.
Does that one?
He doesn't have his financial agreement.
I think I'm not the only one, I have a financial agreement, but I missed it.
It was all online, so I don't know if that would be different from what?
Use typos in the...
Okay.
We'll fix it.
You know, as you look at it, a type error that just 10%, I understand, but stage adjustment have to more clear, you know what I'm saying? And the number one, number two, city impact analysis is not here, so can I have that?
Impact analysis?
Yeah, anybody has that? I don't think so, I'm not the only one, I think everybody said, you know, I got no objection to the project itself, it's a beautiful project, every time I passing by Journal Square, I say, what the heck's they doing up here, you know?
Can we get the rest of the council, the rest of the council, impact analysis?
I actually do have a question now, because unfortunately, if this is online, I didn't go online today, I went off the draft of the ordinance and financial agreement that we were going back and forth on, so I'm not familiar with some of these terms that are in this draft statement, I don't know if I ever received that, to tell you the truth. You must have, at some point. I don't know, this tax amendment has been going on for so long, I know we had some emails back and forth between us all, but I don't remember seeing this, April 6th. I'll have to look at it.
Okay, please.
Alright, we'll just confirm what's...
Yeah, they significantly affect the finances of the project, though.
Because we talking about how much you will pay in the future, you know? Right, John? You agree, right?
Alright, okay.
I wanna make sure, how much cost will be, okay?
That's a good job.
Alright, good.
Can't even give him a compliment.
No other questions for?
Mr. McCann and Matt?
That was Paul, right?
Yep.
Actually, project is a good project, they need, I don't have objection, but only use a Tom and the country itself, okay?
Going to the top now?
From the top.
Go ahead, Jim, wrap it up.
Some of those stages in there, is it possible to stretch them out just a little bit? In, no, in Al Cameron's memo, if that's what the ordinance is now gonna say.
Agreement to say the...
12 to say?
No, the stage adjustments are fine, but the 14, the going from 12 to 14 to 16. I'm looking, so it's a 12% abatement for basically, for...
For a fifth year.
Eight year, eight, yeah, eight years, because in the first, then it goes to 14.
Year nine.
In year nine, is it possible for us to keep it at 12 for up to year, year 12? Just to keep that?
Listen, still able to save 1.5 billion dollars profit tax, even go 12, 14, 16, you have to save 1.5 million profit tax, so don't worry about too much, you know, that's more than enough. I'm telling you, yes, I calculated, yes, you save...
Well, I guess the, I guess the only thing is that we started out at 10%, because that's what the mayor's policy says, and we understand that things have changed from then, so we're accepting the 12%, but I wasn't really quite aware of the fact that it was only 12% for eight years, I really thought it was...
We only feel comfortable with 10%, you know, so we have to understand, but I'm just...
I'm with you on the 12%, that's not my concern, it's to try to not have it go to 14% quite so fast.
14, 16.
We understand it's going to, I'm just asking if you could push the 12% out, instead of making it end at eight years, could it end at 12 years? That would give it a little bit more stability.
Actually, that project?
The administration has presented certain ordinance and financial agreement, which obviously needs to be refined, but that's, that's the proposal, so if you wanna change that, you would have to withdraw the ordinance and go back to the administration to see if they wanted to change it. I mean, the council really doesn't directly negotiate tax abatements, so...
Let's talk more about...
Yeah, I think you need to speak to the...
Why don't we let them have a discussion with the deputy mayor?
Exactly.
Tax abatement folks?
So if you change that the percentage of years, then please change with a Tom 2.
He also changes the...
Tom, instead of 25 years, come over to 15 years, what, 10 years?
The term, he wants 15.
Not only change of, you know...
We have populations who are...
Yeah. Free to reject or accept, but we're not, right. Alright, so we'll get back to you by Wednesday.
Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, from the top. Not yet. Wait.
10P, no, not you, sorry, Council President, can you explain 10P?
Is there someone here to discuss that? Okay, so she wants to discuss?
I wanna understand it, because my understanding right now seems to be sort of mixed up. It sounds to me like you're gonna take the, the union of the anonymous, autonomous, the autonomous agency, and now put them over the, our existing agency that already had a union, and I'm not clear on that, so I need you to tell me why we're doing that, when we already have a union, don't we already have a union?
If that's what we're doing.
If that's what we're doing, in other words, I don't, I'm not clear, so that's why I want you to explain to me.
Want to explain what's going on here?
For record, Councilman Bojiano asked me to ask you guys to pull this, but I don't know the explanation of it, so that's why I'm just...
This is tax pay?
No, no, 10P.
Yeah.
It's yelling what he wants?
No, no, yeah, yeah, so I said to him, I'll say it, and he want me to, so...
Let the BA speak, and then, and there's a question on the floor about pulling the resolution.
So the, Councilman, you're right, so, you know, when the agency, JCA, was dissolved on January 1st, I'm not January, but April, close of business, April 1st, you know, the employees came over as city employees after that. Most of those employees were represent, at the authority, were represented by local 641, which is a group from the Teamsters Union. Throughout the process, the Teamsters kept approaching the city about representation. You know, we kinda just listened, didn't really engage in it, we got approached by the, the employees of the JCIA, asking if they could somehow continue to have that representation with the city. We start having discussions with them at that point, to hear what they would say, to see if it would be beneficial to the city to probably engage in it. They came to the table, you know, we made some, some demands that we weren't sure would have been accepted. They tended to agree with some of our demands, they, you know, freezing wages for several years, because some of the employees there, their salaries are, were higher than our local 245 employees, they've agreed to the same benefit package that are currently recognized by our employees. We did consult outside council, whether or not, you know, the recognition clause that currently is in effect with local 245, and whether or not there would be a violation. We were given an opinion that we could pursue this, even though local 245 had a clause in their contract that said, all 240, all employees of DPW would be members of their unions. So with that being said, the, you know, there was a position taken by our law, that we could take this action because of the unique situation that we were in, bringing a new organization into the city. Obviously, local 245 doesn't agree with this, they have taken, you know, action, they filed certification, unit certification with PERC, they have filed unfair labor practice against the city. Yes.
Backtrack, because you're talking a lot of talk, a lot of...
I'm sorry.
I just wanna know, how are we gonna take a new union and override, and I know nothing about 651 or 282, I don't know anything about those unions. What I'm asking you is how are we gonna take a new union, and bring it in, and put it over people who have been employed through this union?
We're not, we, what we've done is, when we created the new DPW, we created two new divisions, Division of Sanitation and a Division of NID.
And that's just the employees?
And the employees from the old JCIA primarily were put into those two functions, with some exceptions, like the mechanics, they were put into the automotive division, they are members of 245. But it's the employees that are being assigned to the Division of Sanitation and NID, which weren't represented prior to this, because they didn't exist, so we're really not impacting the current employees prior to this dissolution, it's just the employees that came over, people that were represented by 641 are now DPW employees in the Divisions of Sanitation, NID, disagreements tend to be same.
Those people maintain their period of time that they've been with the union, the dues that they've paid, and all of that stuff, those people that you're bringing over from 641 will still be in their position?
Under 245.
No, they're not gonna be in 245.
So 641 is the Teamster Union, so, so, what makes it, you know, a seamless transition, when they go to sanitation, you know, they're still recognizing their seniority from the authority in sanitation, because they're all the same employees.
From JCIA?
Correct. You know, it's the, the employees that went in, like, say, automotive, the mechanics, they're in a different situation, they are now in 245, and they have different rules to play with, but it's, it's...
So let me just, if we talk about...
Help us out, help us out.
Folks, so we talked about, at the last meeting, NID, and there's a rehire list, I assume those rehire folks are gonna be local 245, if we end up hiring, then we're gonna have in one division, members of local 245 and local 641 represented differently, is that...
You can, because the title, the employees of 641 are very specific right now by title, they're all various equipment operator type titles, you know, the example you're just citing, in NID, code enforcement officer is not a title that's a Teamster represents, so they would fall into 245.
Well, I think, it is very confusing, but we can't, we can't, you know, bring in an autonomous union, right? 641, I guess, was the previous union in the 70s and 80s, right? So I guess, then it was dissolved, 245 took over, so that 245 came in, that 641 is out of the picture, you can't bring 641 back after it's been dissolved, what you could do is bring those members from 641 into 245, and then they could, they could maintain their status, or however it is, but that's the way to do it, you can't, you can't go 245 into 641.
There is a process that the city is not involved with, that the union could file, file cards, signature cards, so, you know, 641 could, if they wanted to, go in and go after the entire representation of DPW, and see if they wanted, if they get a majority of the people to sign union cards, they could submit those cards to PERC, and ask to be recognized by the city entirely. Right now, they're just asking to represent the smaller group that they always represented, you know?
They tried that recently, because usually, before it comes to any type of resolution, at 641, if they wanted to do that, they would have done it. They haven't...
But they will do it if they sense that, that there'll be a problem with this, with this tentative agreement.
I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable with the resolution, I mean, I don't know.
But let me ask you this one, don't worry about that, I'll feel, how about the members itself, how they feel, they feel comfortable? That's what I wanna know.
Formerly represented by 6, in the JCIA, represented by 641, still wanna be represented by 641. From the few that have come to us, you know, their shop stewards have come to us, they've come to the table and asked us to entertain this, so that's why, I mean, you know, we've said all along that we didn't wanna harm the employees in this process, it's they who have asked for this, we're just following through their question.
Union leaders in here, this room?
They're represented in local 245 here.
Okay, I wanna know, how is this going to affect our, our union, is it 245? How is this going to affect the union members of 245? That's what I wanna know, how is it, is this gonna be a negative impact or a positive impact on the members of the city's Department of Public Works that were already represented by 245? That's what I wanna know.
I don't know what the...
Negative, or...
I mean, there might be some disharmony down there, but...
If, let's say, you wanna do a technical, you can bring, the administrative board of 245 can take over 641 and call it 641, but that, the administrative of 245 will be the head of 641, we have to make that clear. For example, if I'm the president of 245, and we emerging into 641, I am still going to be the president of 641.
No, that's not the way it works.
Then, that's where the problem lies in, because you're asking the president of an autonomous agency, that's, that was absorbed, to be now, to take over 245, obliterating what was there, and now they have a...
No, that's not, no, that's not what he's doing.
So we're still having 2U?
Yes.
641 represent the very specific group of, no, 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 641's just representing the equipment operators that they represented at JCIA, 245 will still remain in existence, they actually, they almost any, they actually gained, they gained some membership in this transition.
It's a merge.
No, it's not a merge.
No, it's not a merge either. It's a, it's a plan.
It's a two-suggestion, will be separate this thing.
Two separate entities, yeah.
The BA, let's make it clear. So, DPW gonna have a two-union, what is it, 241, 645, it will be, right?
Yeah.
245 and 641.
Yes.
And 641 only represent the employees that came from JCIA.
JCIA.
Right, that's it. The rest of, the employees will still be represented by 241.
Building the streets, parks. Director's office, they still will be represented by local 245.
That's not, that's what you're saying. Any union representative here, can't you come up and, uh, we can ask questions? Please, can't you? Yeah. So you answer to us, what is the problem?
So, it would be, it would have been fair if 641 was here as well, I'm sorry.
What union are you?
245.
How about 641 here?
641 is not here.
Okay. Well, tell us what you think, 245.
Several things, I think. First place, my name's Samuel Donald Monica, I'm the president of local 245. Okay, back in the eighties, the center, the sanitation department was part of 245. Long, the NID was part of 245 back in the nineties. According to the contract, it says all division, of course you guys read it, all divisions of DPW, uh, are in 245 plus recreations in 245. Now, some of the questions that you've been asking among yourselves, I can answer. How does it affect two unions? Very simple. We have heavy equipment operators in our union. We have light equipment operators in our union. If 246 was to be heavy equipment, and their, their trucks are a lot better than ours, they're bigger and, and whatnot. If they needed to be used in a snow emergency and 640, was it 641? 641 didn't have the personnel, they would ask our personnel to do it. And we can't put 245 drivers in their vehicles.
641 union.
Right. Two different unions.
Right there, so. If, if, if you guys are out working for the city, it's not gonna be a local, one local leader telling another local leader what you should be doing. It's gonna be your department director or division director saying, this is what you're gonna do, and this is what you're gonna do, not the, uh-
Yeah, but we don't, we don't have to drive their vehicles.
I got it.
That's, that's the point. If it's all 245, the city's gonna serve, save money.
They're all city vehicles, they're not us against them. They're all city vehicles. The only way they wouldn't be able to drive a certain vehicle, they didn't have the certain CDL license, the qualifications to drive the vehicle.
No matter what union they are.
Correct.
And we have, we have certifications. Matter of fact, they gave Orlando a list
of those certifications.
Does the money change? In other words, is there a difference in the salary for a
641 employee than there is for a 245 employee?
Yes.
Yeah, so, as I mentioned earlier, the, the, the salaries at the former authority were, were higher than our employees. So when we sat down, talked with 641, they agreed to a three-year salary freeze. So to give 245 a little bit of time to try and catch up.
I got a question for Bob.
When that 245 employee has to drive the 641 shift or whatever, is he gonna make the same salary as that person that was, I mean, you know, I'm just looking at all the things that, it's like, what a ball of a confusion this is.
They belong to the union? They belong to the city, Jersey City. They drive whatever vehicles they drive in accordance with their job descriptions and job responsibilities now.
Okay, the next question is that, is it-
641, 245, do they have that different benefit, if just by union country, or same?
641 agreed to the same, same benefits package as 245.
Yes, reason, yes, sounds.
And they froze their salaries for three years.
Dan, what is the problem with you about union salary?
Oh, yeah. But I want you to answer this question. Are you gonna get 245 up to $15,000 difference in three years? Can you get us up that pay?
It's all part of the negotiating process, during labor negotiations. Do I see $15,000 raise in three years? I'll be honest with you, no.
Okay, by putting 641 in that position, you're breaking our contract that we had with the city. Okay, the NID was part of 245 back in the nineties, before they were dissolved. Now they're back, and you're saying they're going to 641. They should be in 245. We have heavy equipment operators, they have heavy equipment operators. They make the difference, $15,000 difference between our members and their members. The dues, their dues are a lot higher than our dues.
641 is only to 245. They can still be, they still could be subject to raises though, right?
Well, they don't-
I mean, so they-
Contract.
They'll never catch up. They get, will never catch up.
I, I mean, will it?
If we're gonna debate-
Huh? Yeah, we'll never catch up. You're right, absolutely right. Never catch up. Okay, but I got a problem in automotive. Automotive is in 245.
We're gonna debate this, it's only fair that both unions be here at the table. Um, if we're gonna have one union at the table, we gotta have both at this point, 'cause, uh, this is not, uh, not gonna be productive. So what I'm gonna suggest is, now we withdraw it. Ask the, and bring them both, 'cause we opened up the floodgates here, and, uh, the conversation's wide open, so.
Issue gonna be raised?
Right.
What will be called, what kind of problem will cause?
The issue here is, the Teamsters will feel like they've been acting in good faith, and I don't know how they're gonna react. Um, like, like-
Because they were, they were, how long was, um, JCIA in existence?
It's been more than 15 years.
Since 1949.
Right. And so these people have been with JCIA?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, we're in for a perk, now we follow.
We are the majority. Yes, the perk decision was withdrawn.
They've paused the, the speech.
Oh, okay.
It hasn't been-
Pending.
But- PERC will, will answer the unit certification question and the unfair labor practice question. And whatever PERC rules, we'll have to abide by.
So there's a, there's a full-
So, so this, how long is that, how long before they'll rule?
I can't speak for PERC. It could be, uh, a month, it could be six months.
Yeah, so why don't we put this in without hearing from PERC personally? We have a ground to be fair.
Is he gonna have a point here right now?
Yeah, but we need to be fair with both unions. In other words, we need to be fair with the guy who's negotiating with us, but how can we make a decision?
We need to somehow acknowledge 641's existence in the city and the terms that they tentatively agree to.
Well, if we-
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Solve it anyway.
PERC will solve it.
Whether we agree or not, so if we agree, then if PERC-
Disagree with it, yeah, we have to withdraw it. It won't mean nothing.
With this, though, if I can-
They'll reverse it.
They'll reverse it.
What this does is maintain the status quo. If we were to decide, then we would make a decision, and PERC, I would assume, would say, well, the city's already determined, you're going into local 245. So if we made the decision ourselves, then PERC would say, done, done deal. So what the administration is proposing here, correct me if I'm wrong, is maintain the status quo, let PERC come, figure this out, and, uh-
Okay, okay. That sounds good, that's gonna be it. Let PERC figure this out.
But then, they're saying pass, they're asking pass this.
They're asking us to pass this as a temporary notice.
Until we hear from PERC, is that what it says?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
To the policy union, correct? Good.
Yeah, we're passing-
245 is that way.
We don't, we don't, we don't take sides. We're not taking sides.
We should wait for the decision of PERC.
Just pass this. You know, you should table this until that, that, that verdict comes in.
Right, they're, they're not here, they have, they have union protection.
They don't have any union protection now for 90 days. I got, I got some new members. They got 90 days. Okay, it might be resolved within the 90 days.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm a lawyer, but, uh, what do you say?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Yeah.
From the top.
All right, we did 3A, 3-
One more question to call you, right? If we fold this down, what- They still don't have a union, right?
Right.
In other words, if I don't agree with it, if it doesn't pass the council, and Danny doesn't agree with it, and if, if it doesn't pass the council, then they still won't have a union, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
In 90 days, it'd be one union on the other. And they have 90 day grace periods.
All right, from the top. We did 3A. 3B is an ordinance amending the noise, chapter 3, uh, 222, adopting revisions to local noise control protections recommended by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection.
Questions?
We did C through E. F is authorizing the imposition of an environmental deed notice on Ralph Taylor Park.
Question?
Yes.
The, uh, Ms. Park.
Just to give you an idea, Mr. York.
The park is part of the, the school yard now, that they're gonna use this for the kids. Uh, somebody's got a plank to me, whereas, whereas about five of the six and downwards, says, upon completion of the re, of the park remediation work, the soil contamination will remain at a level above the New Jersey standards. They're saying it's gonna be better?
It's gonna be better than what ED, EDA says in city.
Is, are they saying that they're, they're fixing it?
No, this is, um-
They're putting a restriction on a deed.
We're putting a restriction on it.
Yeah, right. But this is playground, school 20. Is the problem re, completely remediated?
I don't know the answer to that.
Of course, if it was-
This came out because they were doing the work there, and, uh, yeah. Do we have an answer on that?
What do we do with 3E?
3F.
3F.
Well, this is just to put a deed restriction on it. Yeah, the, the school remediated that property. The Ralph Taylor.
The kids, the players.
Yes, yes, but they-
It almost seems like it's not.
It's just a, a formality. They have to put that deed restriction on, saying that at one time, there wasn't an environmental issue there, so future owners know if they were to buy it. Yes, the children, yeah, the school, the students will be, you know, will be safe to play there.
G is an ordinance authorizing a month-to-month lease for 25 parking spaces at 3,000 Kennedy Boulevard. H is an amendment to a lease with 3, excuse me, 30M acquisitions for the space we occupy, 30 Montgomery Street, for planning and construction code, et cetera. 3I-
How about 3H, can I?
3H, Michael, go ahead.
3H, you know, we paid rent to $66,000, $170,000. Now, they raised 90, almost 48% rate of rent.
That's why we're trying to get out there.
I think, no, no, it's not the case. Three years ago, 2013, they raised also a lot.
They break, yes, Councilman, I'm not very happy about it, but I don't know where else to go. You know, we've, we've tried negotiating it. They, they will be going to the city whole annex. Uh, that's why it's only a two-year deal. Now, we're just trying to get through that transition period. Um, I guess they know our plan that we're moving out.
So that's why they did that.
Right, and, you know, their, the other explanation was they just invested a lot of money into their, into that building, and they're trying to recoup their money. So they really, I was, we were stuck.
You know, the present time, we rented that 30 Montgomery Street, 33,000 square feet. But city whole annex building, how many square feet do we build?
50, 60,000. Yes, 'cause-
60,000.
No, it's gonna be about 60,000, 'cause it's gonna house HEDC and HHS.
Okay, so, HEDC- All the 30 Montgomery Street will be moved to that area, right?
Yes, that's what I-
Okay.
I know.
Let me ask this one. Who is the owner?
I'm sorry?
Who is a major shareholder in this building?
Uh, that's Conex Equities, I believe.
Conex Equities, yes, it is.
Okay.
And they have, that's why they did that.
All right.
Because most places don't wanna do less than a five year.
Like a three-year with an optional one or two, and we wouldn't be able to do that, and they know that, so.
All right, on to 3I. It's an ordinance granting permission to 58 Giles LLC to make private improvements in the public right-of-way of 940 Pavonia Avenue, also known as 58 Giles Avenue. J and K are five-year tax exemptions for properties at 113 and 115 Wales Avenue.
Questions?
L, M, and N, done. Resolutions?
None.
Resolutions. We have an emergency temporary appropriation as 10A. We have reserve, authorizing the use of reserve funds in the calendar year 2016 municipal budget for various youth job programs. C is a resolution introducing and improving the 2016 budget of the McGinley Square, Special Improvement District. D authorizes the business administrator executed discharge of mortgage affecting 119 Randolph Avenue. E, canceling the sale of real property not needed for public use, 228 Dwight Street. F, canceling the sale of real property not needed for public use, 97-101 Morton Luther King Drive. G, canceling the sale of real property not needed for public use, 12 Arnold Place.
Just saying, those are free properties that we sold at auction, that the, the winning bidder didn't come up with the money, so now we're taking it back, giving back their deposit, and we'll, and we'll auction them off next time.
H, we're replacing lost third-party, third-party tax sales certificate for alternative funding to LLC.
What's that money?
Yes, he-
When we replacemented, issued the tax sales certificate, we charged for the fee, any?
Yes, $10.
$10?
Taxessessor gets $10.
Can we raise that their fee?
By work is.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, but it has to be commensurate with what it cost us to do it. You know, it's, can't be a hidden-
That's been raised a long time.
Oh, well, Maureen's not bashful about the raising fees, so we can ask her, but she, I think, I kind of remember it being raised.
Was it raised $100?
Maybe.
Lit.
Yeah, maybe, maybe it was.
You don't make a note of it when we're looking.
Yeah.
Well, I'll talk to Maureen. I, we did. J, K, L, M, N, O. We just beat P to death. Q is authorizing license agreement with the Central Avenue Special Improvement District Management Corporation, allowing for the use of a portion of block 2901, lot 32. R, S, and T were discussed. U-
Questions?
R.
Senator Johnson.
Michael, you have to abstain on that, you know that, Ron.
This is an event.
U is a contract to Swift Reach Networks for a mass identification system. V is amending contract with HMR Architects in connection with the Apple Tree House. We did W with Director Gandula before, and that, and we're done with the resolutions.
Motion.
We have a motion to adjourn-
Motion.
-by Councilman Ramchall at 7:50, seconded by Councilperson Waterman. We have everybody in attendance, excepting Councilperson Osborne and Councilman Bajano. Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.